Do we have any, uh?
We do. We have the minutes of June 28th, 2018 for your consideration.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Blaney.
Second.
Second by Zuccarelle. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Six yes, one absent. Hey Claire.
Hi.
You gonna start us off?
Sure. Well, what order would you like to go in?
Yeah, we have, no, you have applicants here.
I do have applicants here. Um, would you like to go to, um, Southampton Country Day Camp?
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
I think, um, Paris in a row.
Twenty-four.
She's right here.
Twenty-four. Southampton Day Camp.
So at our last meeting, we had, um...
Ellen Feldman, yeah, from Cash and Associates. And you discussed the contents of the FEI, um, the finding statement. Um, you asked that it be updated and emailed to you, and it was last Wednesday. Um, and, um, so we're here at, uh, for the board's consideration. Um, do you want to speak on this?
Uh, yes. I think we still, there were still some minor, is the applicant's representative here or...
I think they're outside.
They're outside.
Yeah, I think you'll call...
Yeah, hold on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just said the applicants, attorneys outside there. We should call them in.
Because I think we, we were out of order on the agenda. So we had a revised draft circulated. Um, however, there were still some additional issues that, clarifications that we were trying to iron down with our consultant. And we haven't quite had the opportunity to do that. We also have, board members have been away, have been in travel. Uh, our consultant hasn't, uh, has been on other projects, and it's been hard to nail that down. So I think, um, the sentiment of the board is to put this over to September 13th, at which time we would have a final document to adopt. In the interim, I would ask Director Tadi, uh, that, um, to advise, uh, the community that the, uh, the comment period has been closed for a while. We've informally taken comment, but it, um, it's important that this record be closed. And, um, we'll draft a reply to any emails that come in thanking them for their, um, interest in the application, but to advise them that the record has been closed. So, uh, just, we really need to consider the record that's before us now. And then I would ask, um, Claire, why, maybe at this point it'd be a good idea since we are going to be drafting, we are going to be reviewing the finding statement to just bring us up to speed. Um, I mean, many of us are familiar with SECRE, some of them, but just a refresher of what constitutes a finding statement, what it's based on, and how it, how it is to be developed.
Yeah, the finding statement, and it's your conclusion on the project and its environmental impacts, um, related to the actions before the, the boards and the decision makers in this case. Um, it is based upon the FEIS, which actually includes the DEIS in its entirety also. Um, and the FEIS, um, this, the smaller version of it is the public comments that came from the hearings and the letters of the DEIS and the responses. Um, this is your documents. When you would say is added, that the information is in there. That is your document and your conclusions relating to that. Uh, finding statement is that summary of the conclusions, whether there should be mitigation related to, uh, any environmental impacts that would be all included in the finding statements, and any conditions related to that.
So the finding statement then has to be directly tied into the FEIS?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And the FEIS was deemed complete?
Adequate.
Adequate.
Adequate is the word.
Right. Oh, that's right. My nomenclature correct.
Yes, exactly.
So what I think we're, it's going to be productive is, um, since we have a three-week gap, and with, uh, summer winding down, is to ask board members to, um, draft any questions, clarifications, um, on various, any open issues they see, or possible modifications, and, um, to forward them to the consultant. I would thought maybe you'd be the conduit, Claire. Uh, but specifically, um, direct comments referencing the specifics of the FEIS. So we're not, um, so we can have a clear picture of what the comments relate to, because the comments in the finding statement has to be related to the FEIS. And, um, we'll hopefully get a response, we'll, we'll have interaction with our consultant and finalize any open issues.
Yeah. And we just ask that maybe you give us those comments maybe mid next week, maybe Thursday of next week if you can. Of course, I mean, if you guys are working on it and need more time, let us know. But that way she can do the updates and then be prepared to act and come back here on September 13th.
We're not, Claire?
You want to speak into the mic?
Oh, sorry. So, um, yes, if you could just make sure you get us the comments by mid next week, it'll be...
Okay.
At that point, we'll have a formal, not an application, but a formal piece of paper saying what, uh, what do we understand as the issues and, you know, what are we going to do to mitigate?
Right. There is a draft right now of the, um, the, um, the finding statements, um, so that you can work with that document. And then, of course, the FEIS and the DEIS are online, so you can reference them easily on the town website.
So can we just clarify that the FEIS contains and includes also the DEIS, and the scoping document should also be reviewed?
Absolutely.
Okay. And that, what, when do you think you could get a finding statement to us so that we don't have delays?
That, that's what I'm thinking. If your comments come to us, let's say by Thursday of next week, then before the, you know, I would give her a week to then incorporate all that information. And then, so, we're talking about at least, hopefully, a week before.
So we won't have any more delays?
Correct.
Good. It's been a long process, and we want to make sure we get it right. I guess the only other thing to, regarding the application, is to, uh, inquire from the applicant if, I know we're, we have certain deadlines, uh, before us, and inquire from the applicant whether they consent to very minor adjournments.
Hi, Wayne Bruin, O'Shea Marsh, Sensica Bruin, on behalf of, uh, the applicant. Um, pursuant to SECRE, you're, we're required to adopt the finding statement back in May. We have consented to several adjournments already. You've had a document. To me, nothing's changed since May. Um, I raised this because we specifically, last two weeks ago, thought that you were specifically, what you just asked the board to do was going to happen within these two weeks. And we gave you the extension so that you could accomplish that in the two weeks. My client, uh, we got word that this may be, uh, something that was requested. I went back specifically to my client and asked the question, and he, at this point, is, uh, very disappointed and will not give his consent any further to any further delays as been described by your board members. So, um, that's all I can put on the record at this point.
Well, our action is, is, uh, as I've mentioned before, is, is for the purpose of, um, drafting a comprehensive document that includes all the concerns, all the issues. And, uh, I will note there have been a number of adjournments at the request of the applicant, I believe. Claire, you can sort of, certainly confirm that, but throughout the six-year period, the applicant has come before this board numerous times, requesting adjournments.
Correct.
And matters to be held over. So I think that needs to be stated in the record. And, uh, we will, uh, we will get this document adopted, uh, after this brief, uh, brief adjournment. So we're gonna, we're gonna table the, uh, application at this time. There's no action, there's no vote, and we'll bring this back September 13th. Okay?
Second on the motion?
Excuse me?
Second on the motion?
Okay. Do we have motions? I'm sorry. We have a motion by Robin, second by Phil. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Excuse me?
I'm opposed.
One opposed, five yes, one absent. Great.
Hi.
Thank you, Karen.
Now, we see you're ready. If you all, what you feel is right, maybe you can go.
Yeah. We could. I mean, we just don't have the document tightened up to the point that we want to...
Yeah, but, um, they know that too, so...
Yeah. So, remember, this document then goes to ZBA. If we don't have everything tightened up and together, the opponents of the project are just going to tear it apart, run it through ZBA.
Yes.
Uh, there was some sort of conflict, um, with these... I don't know what the nature of the conflict here, the conflict of interest or something. So she had to refuse herself. Right. Claire? Huh? Uh, no. I'm not saying, not in the future, but I spoke to Jim, and we have very tight deadlines of looking for...
Where do you want to go?
He suggests if you bring your concerns first to Karen. Is that good? All right. Claire?
Um, we're gonna go to, uh, the other secret item, if you don't mind.
Sorry, Claire, where are you going?
The other secret item, which is 23.
23.
Item 23.
Okay, but it has to be, uh, it has to be, well, it has to be agreed by the board. It has to be done by motion and agreed by the board.
Can I make a motion on that?
Okay. Once we finish the meeting.
Oh.
This is TJ Maxx.
TJ Maxx.
Another, hey, how are you, Carrie?
Good. You don't need to be at the table or...
No, no, come up here. Um, I've given you out the secret documents related to this. Um, yeah, the last meeting, um, we had some traffic discussions, and, uh, that's been satisfied. There's a, a letter in there from our contract, traffic consultant, that they're satisfied with the information presented. Um, it's the recommendation for a negative declaration. Carrie's gonna go over.
And Carrie, thank you. I know the timetable. I don't know what it, it used to be the dog days of August, and I'm thinking August, you know? What happens in August? World War I and Dorf...
This gets done, right?
Right.
Um, well, actually, at the last meeting, I appreciate, um, Joe was here, and I know of that lengthy discussion. There is a letter, um, sorry, just to back up, the applicant provided a detailed response to Nelson and Pope's previous letter, which documented some of the concerns that the board had at our previous work session to that. Um, uh, Nelson and Pope reviewed their response and provided the board with a letter that found that the response was adequate, um, and they believe that the limitation of the right-hand turns out of the southern shopping center driveway and the signage will adequately address, um, concerns with respect to St. Hall Road and Montauk Highway. So, uh, the other thing that, um, we have prepared for you, and is in front of you, is a series of things related to the environmental review. We have a part two and a part three environmental assessment form, which identifies those areas of, uh, that required additional review. Um, the applicant, if you recall, did, in addition to the parking and traffic studies, there was an EAF supplemental document that went through a wide range of issues on the project, which was, had been reviewed and discussed in some of our previous meetings, traffic being, and parking being the issues of greatest concern, and, and those have more or less been the focus of our, uh, discussions to date. We have, uh, based on the collective review of all those things, drafted a negative declaration for the board's review. Um, at this time, another, another point that the board was concerned was, or with, was with respect to use. And, uh, the applicant has agreed to, um, establish a use covenant that would keep the, the uses compatible if the marshals were to vacate that additional square footage. Um, so that's something that's also documented in this negative declaration. Uh, I can go through all the, all the details. I don't know if you want... No, yeah, okay. If you want, if you want to go through each impact area, but basically, um...
Been there, done that.
The, the recommendation is, yes, we've had a number of constru-, um, a number, a number of discussions, and at this point, we believe that, uh, it is suitable for a negative declaration, uh, and that this would proceed to, uh, a planning board, site plan application, and, uh, ZBA forbearances.
And the limitations, the covenant that we're proposing to draft, that's going to be part of our, um, that's going to be part of our site plan, then, correct? We don't have to really fine-tune that. I mean, we have the substance, we reviewed the substance last week, and, uh, so that's going to be a site plan.
Right. My, yeah, the way it's addressed in here is that the, that a covenant would be filed.
Okay.
Great. Well, Carrie, I just wanted to say, I, I'm sure all of us have had a chance to read through the documents, and I was, just wanted to say, I'm particularly impressed with the quality of what you put together, and I think it, uh, helped us a great deal.
I would second that.
Thank you very much.
It was great that we...
And the efforts of, uh...
So we could read it.
Good. I know it was down, we were down to the wire a little bit there, but I'm glad it got to you.
And the efforts of Claire, many of you don't realize the tremendous amount of work she's put into this, uh, this application.
You get a free parking spot.
That's the only one that doesn't need it.
So, uh, Claire, do, uh, how do we, what is our action? You have a resolution?
I do have a resolution. It's just a very simple one. Um, I know the applicant wanted to maybe put some language in here, the actual, uh, the actual secret documents, talk about you granting a land bank waiver.
Right.
Um, so, but they may want a finding in your actual resolution, which I can easily add...
Okay.
...to that. Um, so, you know, subject to the land bank covenant, which is the usual thing and things. But I have this here, so...
Okay, great. We'll take a look at it?
We'll adopt it. Um, and of course, it goes then back to the zoning board appeals, because they have the pending application before that.
We'll be getting this back as for site plan, then?
Yeah. You'll be getting it back for site plan. Did the applicant want to speak on it?
So you...
Should we just...
Learn my lesson.
It's short, should we read it to the record?
Um, sure. I think, I don't think I'll...
Well, it's, it's going to be subject to the land bank covenant and to your covenant.
Right, the restrictive use covenant.
Restrictive covenant. So it should, it should mention both covenants in the...
Okay. Yeah, I want to make a finding related to both.
Okay.
The use covenant.
So that way we make sure it's...
And then the, I'll, uh, I'll grant a waiver. I, you know, I put it in the findings all the time, so, subject to 330, 100, um, and subject to that covenant too. Okay? Have two findings related. So I'll send it to you.
Yeah. That's really the substance of it.
And then it'll be a negative declaration.
Okay. Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Phil?
Second.
Second by Zuccarelle. Or was it Glorian?
I think we...
It was the tie. I'm gonna give it to Glorian. Second by Glorian. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, such, these guys over. I know what happened. I know the dynamic here, Glorian. You get overpowered, and, uh, I've got to be cognizant of that. Carrie, thank you again.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Stay safe. Beat the traffic home.
Um, I'm gonna go back. Is there anybody here for a recedo? No? No? Okay, good. Um, I'm gonna skip over a couple. Two and three I'll skip over.
Okay.
I'll do Watermelon Village topics.
Watermelon Village? Okay, great.
Number four.
Number four.
So, uh, the board has received a complete site plan application, almost complete site plan application, and you, uh, coordinated SECRE with no agency asking for lead agency. So I've prepared the secret documents, um, which were attached to your computer. Do you see them?
Yep.
Okay, great. I prepared a part one, oh, sorry, part two and part three.
Ten pages, right?
Yes. And, uh, with the summary of the impact on land and groundwater aesthetics, um, which is the layout, um, their residential and the architectural design, the historic and archaeological, which is, they had a track, uh, tracker had done a archaeological survey and found no, um, archaeological work is recommended, no additional. Um, there's two existing structures that are older. They'll need landmarks, but that's just administrative process. The traffic impact study concluded it was low generating. Um, there was no recommendations in terms of, um, any changes to the roadways on this, but there was an issue, I'm, I'm looking at the second, the top of second page of, um, the part two narrative. There's issue regarding traffic calming, possibly putting, you know, speed bumps. This was a, an issue brought up by the public. Um, the recommendation from, uh, the traffic study is to possibly put a walkway across. I didn't know if you wanted to tie it into the SECRE, maybe just do a referral to the highway department to see if they would be interested in it.
Is that on Noah Doa Avenue?
Along Noah Doa, because there's a park on Noah Doa, and I could see, it might make sense to put something there. But I, instead of tying it to SECRE, I thought we maybe just, maybe the applicant proposes it, and we refer to the highway departments and see what they say, since it's his jurisdiction.
Is the applicant proposing it?
Uh, they suggested in their study, but they're not proposing it, whether it is maybe warranted or not. So maybe they can speak to it. I just want to finish the other issues, maybe we can talk about that.
Okay, great.
Um, otherwise, it's consistent with the community plans and, uh, community characters. I'm recommending a negative declaration on the project. So, if they want to speak to that issue.
Okay. Is the applicant's representative here?
Good afternoon. Brant Reiner from Inter Science Research Associates, here on behalf of the applicant. I'm here with Mary Jane Isato, who is the attorney for the applicant. Uh, just to address the two comments that were made by, uh, by Claire, the recommendations in the traffic impact study were simply in response to community questions about traffic calming measures. Um, the applicant has no position either way as to whether or not the planning board should implement them. It was simply, um, offered because our traffic consultant was involved during the public hearing process.
So it is, it is offered, um, as a mitigation, because...
In other words, if you...
I was gonna have to go.
Mary Jane, yeah, that's the mic. Sorry.
Mary Jane Isato, Burke's Land and Isato, 21 South Main Street, for the applicant. Um, you may or may not recall, but all, a lot of residents came in and spoke, uh, as to the, uh, traffic, uh, their current concerns, as well as anticipated concerns about traffic down that road. In fact, they were asking for various things, which I believe that neither the board nor the applicant has any control over, traffic lights and whatnot. So, uh, we are offering, but we have no position. I mean, if the board would like to review, uh, what we've offered, and, and we're not saying to implement them, but it's, that's really, it, our comments on the traffic study by, uh, the Dunn Engineering was in response to all of the comments that were made by the neighborhood, uh, and, and the public that were here to speak, really, essentially. So...
Okay.
I mean, we don't have strong feelings, one way or the other.
The other point was to have no left-hand turns onto Noah Dona. Um, that is a little bit like, you know, it's, it's a small traffic generator, so it's a little bit not...
No left turns from...
So you, if you were going...
No, onto Noah Dona.
If you were going east, you wouldn't be able to get into the, into the development from Montauk Highway.
You're going to east.
No, I think exiting this site onto Noah Dona, you wouldn't be able to make a left-hand turn. I think that's what they're told. So if you're gonna go to Sag Harbor, you're gonna have to go out to the light.
That's a dead end.
No, it isn't.
Not with Station Road, no.
No.
And it goes...
Traverses the railroad tracks. You've been on that road.
I have, but I saw it ended.
No.
You, you had to go into the, into the watermill...
It ends on certain days in February, when there's like 30 inches of snow, but, uh, the rest of the year, it's, it's open. It's a railroad, yeah.
Into that, the, the...
Yeah, you'd go to the end of Noah Dona, you make a right, and then follow the railroad tracks out to Deerfield Road.
I'm gonna have to try that.
Now that I put this on the televised record.
Exactly. Exactly.
Thank you.
So we can, I'll take it out as a reference in the secret documents, but I will, uh, we'll have it, discussions and site plan.
Good.
Yeah.
I'm confused, as usual. Where did, where's the crosswalk going to go?
It would be, there's a park, I'm sorry. Let me make your plan.
Across...
East.
East. Okay, so across, you know, what, no?
Yeah.
Like right here?
Yeah, there's a park.
That's over the deer.
Surely you're not talking about a crosswalk across Montauk Highway.
No. So, you see the park?
It's the light there.
Yeah, it's the light.
It would be here, approximately here, this is what they're talking about.
Oh, okay.
Um, so that it would allow people who may be coming from this direction, and it would calm down traffic. You'd have a sign, there would be a crosswalk, so calm.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah. So, we'll leave it as a site plan issue.
Right.
Okay. Good. Um, the only other thing, uh, we would be deeming as complete, and I've got everything else, uh, they didn't provide the elevations for the sewage treatment plants. Uh, we would need that, because the Airbnb would review it, and, and so, um, I'm asking them to submit that in three weeks. Otherwise, we couldn't have the public hearing on September...
As soon as we, actually, we're gonna try to have it, like, way before then.
Great, great. So I put it as a condition that they submit the plans for review.
So our action now, is it gonna be one resolution?
Yeah, one resolution, uh, your lead agency, your issuing a negative declaration with those little changes, and...
Deeming the application complete?
And deeming the application complete, with the condition, yes, of the plan.
And...
September 27th.
September 27th? Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Phil?
Second.
Second by Blaney. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We have five yes, two absent.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Thank you.
And then my next applicant is number six, Atlantic Golf Club.
Number six, okay, great.
What's that?
This is an application for a site plan for a teaching facility, and the clearing of the land and the relocation or mitigation of a small wetlands to be relocated to an additional area of property. So, Atlantic Golf Club was approved, QPSUD, a long time ago. Ran through an environmental review and everything like that. And at the time, they, uh, they constructed it, there were a lot of po, there were pockets of wetlands around, and so that was part of the, the discussion. And I'm trying to think on this, where are the actual... So this is the golf driving range. I know it's very difficult to see on the aerial, but this is probably the best way to do it.
Yeah.
So it's...
We have it on, we have it on here.
It's an aerial, but it's, it doesn't...
Yeah. Yeah, so this is the area, they'd like to build the teaching facility, would be the area you could hit the balls from.
Where's Scuttle Hole?
This is, Scuttle Hole is here, you're not even seeing it.
Oh, it's on the map, okay.
You're not even there, but you come up the road, and this is the golf...
That's the clubhouse.
And then this is the golf driving range right here.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, and so they'd like to tuck it in the hill there, with...
Do we have any jurisdiction on moving a wetland? Can we do that?
You, you are approving authority related to the wetlands upon consultation with the conservation board. So, what has happened, it seems to have happened, is that this was a wetland at the time of the original site plan and the approval from the town board, however, it has dried out to a certain extent, so that we have reports from the applicant's consultant that actually there are no wetland species left. Marty has gone out there, flagged a small area, it's about sixteen hundred square feet, and we will do, at the time of this referral, a referral to him to see if it makes sense in terms of the mitigation they're offering, in terms of additional plantings on the property and possibly creating some wetlands on additional areas.
Could you show us what that mitigation is, Claire?
Yeah, so it is, it's in conjunction with this, is to restore some natural area here, which would not be wetlands, which would be adjacent to the space that they're taking over as part of their driving range. And then it would be this retention pond, which was originally supposed to be part of a road construction, which is not going to happen at this time, it's right here. You can see that there's wetlands at that point. And creating wetland species there and making a lot more violent...
So they're making wetlands.
That's what they are saying, so. What I suggest in this application, it's a little bit over my head in terms of doing anything because I haven't, you know, I haven't experienced this, is to do a referral process with all the agencies and then vet the application in terms of SECR and the impacts. I'd like a good look at the historic SECR documents on this, too. So maybe to deem it complete just for purposes of referrals. In terms of the public hearing, I don't know if we glean anything from the public on this, so maybe waive the public hearing and, but at this point, just deem it complete for purposes of referrals.
To who would you refer it?
Everybody, just like a site plan, would be everybody involved, it's a building.
Got it.
Yeah, it's a building, but definitely conservation, that's the, one of the biggest issues with this.
I know the applicant may be here and want to enter some comments into the record as well.
Good afternoon, Wayne Bruin, O'Shea Marsh Cincinco Bruin for Atlantic Golf Club, also Tony Panza's with us. Tony can explain more of the details, but I just want to remind Claire that part of the request, when the planning board granted special exception approval to the Atlantic Golf Club in the first instance, there were these areas that were not farmed in the depressions where the Marty was there, designated them as wetlands, and associated with that, with the planning board's approval, as typical, we put covenants for buffers around some of the wetlands. So, what would be involved with this application is amendment of those covenants, so...
Do you have them? Because I couldn't figure out...
I didn't, I don't have them with me now, but...
I don't know if they require a hearing now, right? I don't know.
So, my suggestion is, is that we're probably better off having the hearing, unless I can get the covenants and they're not there.
Okay, so we could do that, it would be, you're up to you, but yeah, we'd have to notice it for a covenant amendment, too, which I can figure out in the next couple of days, so.
Who would come to the hearing?
Or if you want to make this second call, I can probably get the covenants and review them with the town attorney in the meantime.
Can we bring this up a little later?
Absolutely, yeah, that's mine with me.
Tony's here?
Let's do that, and so that we're all clear on what...
But I think at the very minimum, we'll do, you know, we'll do, just so Tony doesn't have to say, we just answered this question about the covenants, too, then we could, you know, very minimum, we'll do the referrals, you know.
Okay. Great, Tony has some, looks like some maps, and is it easier to bring it to the table, Tony?
It's okay with you?
Okay, just speak loud because we need...
The mic's on the table, too.
Oh, there is, oh, there are table mics.
Tony Panza, AIA architect with Rogers McCaggh Architects, do a lot of work with...
You picking that up? Oh, okay. Give me your hand, slap.
I do, most primarily my work is with golf clubs and...
Oh, too bad.
For the Atlantic Golf Club, as Claire mentioned, it's for a teaching facility, and for this teaching facility, when we were citing the project, looking for the site, the existing tee box for the pond has quite a large grade change, elevation change, and so without impacting the views and the vistas across that have the farm adjacent, we thought let's put this underneath the driving range, the tee box, so that when you're in the clubhouse or on adjacent property, you wouldn't see the building, you would look straight across it. This also allows us to add a lot of green or environmentally conscious ideas to it. Because we're putting it underground, it's completely a green roof, there's no asphalt shingle, there's no visible EPDM of that nature. We also use geothermal, because we don't want to see any stacks, so there's no, there's no burners of any sort. And just from the drawings, you can see it's three bays, and they're hidden underneath, there's a bathroom and a multipurpose room. So, as we were citing the project, as Claire mentioned, there is, there is an area which in nineteen, when the project was, was approved back in nineteen eighty-nine, there was a couple of pockets that were known as wetland. As we were going through the process, because the normal process is, okay, if we're going to cite a building, we have to make certain that we're outside of the wetland setback, I had, and consultants go out, and consultants looked at two locations for us, they did not find wetland species, they wrote letters, which I have now, but I haven't handed in yet, to the point that they didn't feel that it was a wetland and they wouldn't flag it. After that, asked the town to go out and flag the two areas again, because we want to be appropriate and stay outside the two hundred foot setback if we can. One of the areas, when walking with Marty and later wrote a letter, it's no longer a wetland. The other area, we did flag sometime later, it turned out it was only about fifteen hundred square feet, representative of one's plant species. There's a report that you have found in there from Interscience, which goes through a lot more technical jargon than I can say. In nineteen eighty-nine, the size of that wetland was fifteen thousand, so dropped down to sixteen.
And there's some, some photos that I've brought, it's okay? Sure.
There's the first aerial there, first aerial is from nineteen eighty-four, you can see where the arrow is pointing, that is...
Oh, you found my golf ball.
From nineteen eighty-four?
From nineteen eighty-four, and it shows...
No, all of mine.
All those. When, prior to Atlantic Golf Club being there, it was a farm, so what, as we had our Interscience and a consultant look at it, when you go to twenty seventeen, you can see those areas have dried up. The report notes for a number of reasons, one being that when it was a farm, there was no vegetation there to stop any of the water from flowing into these areas, and now with the natural vegetation and also the golf course and the recontouring, multiple areas are drying up, which kind of brings into question as to whether or not they were wetlands originally or just pockets where water ran to.
Yeah.
Recently, we've had soil borings done down to twenty-seven feet, we found no water table. So, that's just some history on those, those two areas there. There's a couple of photos in here which show the number of walls which are in that wetland or buffered area. So, since nineteen eighty-nine, Atlantic Golf Club has adhered to their, what was originally presented to them by the planning board, which was a... Back in nineteen eighty-nine, this was the approval, and this was a sketch of the golf course, it wasn't actually the final golf course layout, but what it did say is that there's an approval for three point three million square feet of what would be non-vegetative, and everything else has to remain natural. We did an analysis of it and found that the Atlantic Golf Club has kept, has stayed underneath that. I was quite shocked, because I would think most people just keep creeping and creeping and creeping. That didn't happen in this case, and such is the case of over here, which is, this is the driving range, this is that pocket, this is one pocket which is no longer deemed a wetland, and this is the other pocket which is now ten percent the size of what it was flagged at. So, just to point out that Atlantic has been a good custodian of the land, they haven't gone, just decided to make the whole thing a driving range. So, not to the, I just bring up these points, not to say that we're going to say it's not a wetland, what we've asked to do is that, in the driving range area, so that the driving range is here and the building is here, rather than, you saw the photos, which is what's inside of here, rather than have all those balls continually go into there, we'd like to remove this area and make a driving range. And as a, a way to mitigate that, another drawing is further in here, which is in the northwest corner of the site, this corner over here, there is a portion which has water surface about forty-eight hundred square feet, and there's a frag mighty all the way around it. This part, as Claire mentioned, back in nineteen eighty-nine, was set aside for, the town wanted to put drainage in for this road, and it would run into here, so the Atlantic has never done anything with it, and what we're saying now is, why don't we make this more than just a retention pond and turn this into a thriving wetland area? And we're looking at some of the numbers that are in here, so the proposed water surface about nineteen thousand square feet, back in eighty-four, the surface area in the area that we're talking about was about sixteen thousand. So we're trying to exceed what was there before Atlanta came around and enhance this area. There's no frogs or ducks or anything else hanging out or by the driving range, and they're not doing it here because of the frag mighty, but we think that we can create that here.
The other benefit, Tony, is that the land directly across Loper's, much of that has been acquired now by the county, so it's good habitat, it's going to foster wildlife interaction with the pond as opposed to some stagnant, you know, in the middle of a golf course, you know?
That's Loper's path, what the other...
Yeah, that's the...
This is Little...
Little Lloyd.
Dirt Road, and there's this twenty-two acres over here, which is town preserved land, which the Atlantic Golf Club, I'm not certain of the years, but it was some years back, the Atlantic Golf Club was, it was land that they had owned that then went over to town preservation.
I think we still have trail...
We do have trails.
Trailies, but yeah. That's much more productive.
So there's other drawings in there. Jim Rump's office has done planning plans for revegetation and around the pond, with Jim Walker, you know, putting in what he believes is the best for the, I'm sure Jim has thirty different species and animals and everything else listed in there, they're going to be thriving in here. That's a quick run-through.
So we'll table it until Wayne comes back?
Yeah.
Yeah, the question would be, you know, if there is a covenant that has like, I'm not, you know, I'll guess what the, it might say, it might say seventy-five feet from the wetlands or whatever the thing, what would the applicant be asking for? They, just the elimination of the covenant, or would they be willing to put a covenant on the newly created natural vegetation adjacent to it, you know what I mean? I don't, I'm not quite sure what they're asking for, you know?
Yeah, we have to nail down the nature of their request.
With their request, yeah. And it would have to be part of whatever is presented at the hearing, if there's a public hearing required.
Okay, so we'll...
We'll table it and we'll go on to the next one. Yeah, okay, great.
Bring it back up shortly. Do you have any other applicants?
I do, I have number seven, West Hampton Country Club.
Okay. We're in the golf business today.
Golf, golfing, all the time. This is a proposal to replace the existing maintenance facility, which is actually in the town jurisdiction.
Oh, I was going to say.
So, where the clubhouse is for the, this is in the village of West Hampton, but part of their golf course and where the maintenance facility is, is in town jurisdiction. So, they presented plans and a site plan and elevations of the structure, which is pretty much a Morton-type building, it's not going to be very visible. So, we have the required information to set a pre-submission conference on this.
Is that facility going to be on ONAC or is it going to be on...
It's, it's so funny, it's technically Cent sixty-six Bay Crest. Do you have the aerial?
I have the aerial, yeah, and I know the area very well.
Yeah, so I'm just going to look to see, oh yeah, so, at ONAC, this is the actual project area, you can see the line for the village.
Oh, okay, but Straddle's a village, town, village line?
Um, I don't know if any activity's happening in the village jurisdiction, the applicant's representative's here, he wants to speak to it.
Is that, let me just see that.
Yeah, that's the site plan. Does anybody else want to see the site plan? No? Maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to hurt the feeling, but...
I'm offering.
Depends on the price.
Here we go. We'll share.
This is that little halfway house, right?
The maintenance.
Maintenance area.
There's a halfway house.
I don't know.
Joe Lombardi, from the Reiner Group, for the applicant. While the, the town-village line crosses a portion of that property, none of the work that is being proposed is within the town, is within the village. So, they're proposing just to demolish the existing maintenance facility and construct a new, larger maintenance facility.
Where does this line up next to the pond? Is it lined up next to the pond?
Yeah. It's, it's in the jurisdiction of the wetlands, so you would be issuing a wetlands permit when it comes to that stage, but this is the pre-submission stage. Are you done?
Yes.
But they're pulling it back, they're pulling it back, meeting setbacks in this case.
Actually, the, there was a previous approval for the maintenance area that allowed a lesser setback to the wetlands, and we're eliminating some of that area that had been improved in one time and replanting that and creating a larger wetland buffer.
Okay, so, our action is to deem complete?
Set it, set it for a pre-submission conference, we have the required information.
Okay, September twenty-seventh?
September twenty-seventh.
Do we have an item? Motion by Phil. Second by Zuccarelli, all in favor, I oppose abstentions, six yes, one absent. There's no evening hearing on the thirteenth. Oh. Suck it up there. Claire, you still have, you want to jump back to your, you have cleanup items?
I do have another applicant.
Okay.
I'm just going to do Coral Partners, which is an extension for ninety days, this is the first extension for the submission of plans.
That's item number twelve, very good.
Eleven, twelve, yeah.
Motion. Motion by Zuccarelli, second by Phil, all in favor, I oppose abstentions, six yes, one absent.
The JL Rivkin, which I have is fourteen, I'm not quite sure what you have is, is off the agenda.
No, that, Sea Tuck is fourteen.
I'm sorry.
It must be gone.
I must have the wrong...
You took it off. It was really off the agenda.
It's off?
JL Land's?
Okay, it's, JL Rivkin's off, okay.
It's not even ours.
Off. My next one is LI Automobile Collectors?
Item fifteen.
Oh, okay, great. Got that one, right.
I don't have one.
I have a pre-submission report for you.
We do have an aerial, that's about it.
That's an aerial. That's the Norse renovation right there.
The old museum.
Right? It's antique, garbage. Norse quarry?
So the proposal is for a five thousand and change square foot.
Office building.
Office building, with the reconstruction of the rear storage building. Two site plans left, for some reason. See if I can find another one. Oh. That's the site plan, these are some building elevations.
You want to share?
This is the reconstructed building.
This used to be the, it's called museum?
Reconstructed museum building.
Isn't that a museum, like...
Isn't that a museum like?
Yes.
It was. Isn't it empty though?
It's empty now.
Isn't it gonna put that?
And then this is the office building.
Yep. It is. It'd be nice.
Oh, I like the shape. So it's a 7.4 acre property located on Conny Road 39 and also has frontage on Sandy Hollow Road. It is located in the HB zoning district and the R20 zoning districts. It's for 5,500 square foot office building, two-story, reconstruction of an 8,000 square foot storage building. And is also improved with five additional storage building. One is slated for demolition. The improvements are shown in the plans presented to you. The pre-submission conference held on July 12, 2018. No public comments. We require a full site plan application, including lighting, landscaping, building elevations, engineering information, site plan and details, parking, pedestrian, traffic circulation, drainage, sanitary, outdoor lighting, landscaping and architecture. So the four rear buildings are located in the R20 zoning district. And they received an updated CO, I think about last year, for the storage of cars and car parts. Norsek is a, Norsek is a waste facility. It handles pour-jans and pour-potties and things like that. They, to use those back buildings for that nature of use would require a change of use. Well, why not conform a use to another? So I've kind of pointed that out. They would need the ZVA to, to use that. The front of the property is HB. So if they wanted to use that, this reconstructed 8,000 square foot building for the storage of portable toilets or something like that, they could do that with your permission. They'd have to change the use again from the storage of cars to the storage of toilets or whatever other materials they use for storage, so. So they would need an EAF Part 1. It would be a type 1 action due to the number of parking spaces, and I go into that. So I, I just kind of summarized, summarized 2 and 3 about the two uses and the uses of the storage buildings. I do note on 4, that would be no processing of waste on the property. That would not be a permitted use in the zone, either the HB or the R20. The parking calculations, I go into the, the site plan, they go into, just talks about the front two buildings, does not talk about the four rear buildings, which are on the R20, in the R20 zone, in the same, but on the same piece of property. So am I talking about that? So the whole use, if used for storage for those rear buildings, would be about 59 parking spaces, but that was a quick number on my part. Access, there's an existing access to the west for the property, which seems to be used in conjunction with the neighboring cemetery stone manufacturing use.
Monument company.
Yeah, the monument company. Yeah, and so they haven't said close it, but I doubt the county will give them another curb cut without them addressing that in some ways. So that should be, that might be an open issue. Whether you'd want access onto Conny, to Sandy Hollow Road is the question. They're not proposing any at this point, besides that informal one to the north, if you can see that, right? There's an existing one that they're, they don't speak about, but they're, you know, it's shown on the plan. So whether you'd want to create an alternative access, it probably makes sense. People are going north. So we talked about that. You'd want cross-access, I think, in this case.
The adjacent properties?
The architecture of the office building. If you look at the elevations, they're very, it's a very modern, square-looking building. So maybe you'd want some input from the ARB on that before, or if you want to speak about the architecture. And then their case, they're just asking to reconstruct the rear building, which might be nice. I'm not quite sure how tall it is. Seems tall, but HB allows, I think allows for 35 or 40. I don't remember the, the height on that.
27, well.
It says 27 feet.
27 feet.
Mm-hmm.
That's it? That's within.
Oh, it is, well, within. Mm-hmm. They're proposing the 50-foot buffer from Conny Road 39 and the Sandy Hollow Road. You know, the dumpster requirements, they're showing pedestrian walkways, which is good. The archaeological sensitivity area, would you want an archaeological survey on this property?
Has the land been disturbed before?
Uh, in the immediate area, yes. And where the buildings are, yes. So, but maybe.
Any things discovered that could.
Well, there's not been, I mean, this is, the property's been developed since prior to the 1950s, so.
Well, but based on recent news of other unanticipated bones being found, I think probably should.
Okay. Do you want to just do it in the area of development?
Yes.
Okay.
That's simple.
So any area that's not proposed to be cleared would not be included? Okay.
Cleared or disturbed, yeah.
Okay. Cleared or disturbed, okay. That'd be good. Lighting plan, of course. What else I say? Mechanical screens, referrals, and the ZVA variance in a public hearing. So that's a recommendation.
The office building, it said it had a green roof.
Oh, does it? Okay. She want me to put that in there? You support that?
It's on here, and I, and so mechanicals on a roof should be screened. If it's, if it's a green roof, will there be mechanicals, I guess is my question.
You don't know. That, we just, I always say screened roofs, you know, screen mechanicals. So do you want me to mention that you favor the green roof? Do you want to say anything about that?
Well, I'd like to know, is it, what, exactly what they mean?
Yeah.
Because if it's a flat roof, why not solar?
Oh, true. Yeah.
You know, we're not really, we're not really pushing that much on commercial, and some of the other commercial buildings are flat, so why not?
Okay. If you want me to add that as a comment, I will. Is that okay for the board?
Sure.
Okay. Why not solar?
Is this gonna be, this is not a referral for the?
No, not the ZVA. This is my first real look at the ZVA. I think you'll do a separate referral when you get it.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Was it coming to the ARB?
Uh, if they submit an application for the site plan, yes, it would obviously go to the ARB. Do you want them to have a first look at the ARB? Are you concerned about the architecture or?
It says it's going to be an aluminum siding type brush aluminum. I think they should give something indicating the colors and the relationship between surrounding areas.
More information.
And to the ARB.
Okay, more information about the surrounding areas too. Okay.
They're restoring the front, the front building's being restored.
No, the front building is being constructed. The new office building. And then the second building, the storage building, is being restored.
Which is the one, then, that's the Quonset Hut?
The Quonset Hut building. That's, that's a restoration.
That's the restoration.
Right. Yeah, that's, I refer to that as the front building.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so there's, is there going to be, I mean, that's certainly commendable. Are we going to implement any long-term protection of that? That's an iconic facade.
Okay.
Of our area.
With the, the racetrack and all?
No, not the racetrack, but it's been there since the 50s, I think.
I think they said they were going to refurbish the front and make that a display area for the.
Yeah.
The old cars.
Truck, right?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And you protection for the future to, to ensure it remains.
Sort of facade.
Okay. Like a facade. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's good. And then with regards to the architecture, more information and more information with regards to context of the neighborhood, right? John? Good. Here.
Okay, with those in mind, was that?
Um, the applicants here, if you, if you want to speak to this.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
I'm looking at the aerial.
Mm-hmm.
The access that's currently on Conny Road 39?
Mm-hmm.
Is that really the access for the monument company?
Seems to be historically being used for them too, yeah.
Okay, are they, and they're considering using it for their new buildings in that area? They're going to share that, right?
No, their proposal is to do their own access to the east. They, they're silent whether they're going to close that or not, but I doubt the county's going to let them have both. So kind of brought that up as.
Oh.
You see that?
Yeah, I do now. And are they going to use that road, dirt road, that goes way back to their other property?
They've been, they have been using that, yes. They have cut a road through to the Norsek property to the north. I mentioned that in six. I just stated as a fact. Do you want, does the applicant want to speak on this application? Yes, no, maybe?
Hi, I'm Brian Gilbreth from Norsek with Joe, as you guys know. The question on the driveway, the driveway that currently is being used was there when we bought the property, when Skip bought the property. That is on the Long Island Automobile property and is being used by our neighbor. If you look at the building, we are proposing an entrance next to Suburban Auto. And that, that the way we can go into the monument company now will be an exit, if everybody agrees to that.
Oh, I see.
Will not be an entrance.
It's a question of whether the county's going to?
That, that's, well, listen, if, through the process, if, you know, it is highway business, it is on there, there are other businesses on that road. Some have entrances, some have exits. I think if you look at the schematic of the building, it shows the entrance on the eastern portion of the building and the parking diagonal, and you would go around and exit out of that. Now, if that gets changed in this process, so be it.
Maybe why not reach out to the county sooner rather than later? See if they do, because you might have to flip it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll start that immediately.
Right.
If there's anything else I can answer for you is, I'd be glad to do that, but then I'll, much happier than Joe doing it.
Joe Lombardi from the Reiner Group for the applicants. There was a question earlier about how the facade of the storage building is going to be maintained. And the applicants propose to restore the front 15 or 16 feet to make it look exactly the way it did when it was an operating auto museum. And then behind that facade, they'll be, they'll construct the storage building.
So we were discussing implementing some protection for that facade, which you would have to consult with council. We wouldn't want to see a subsequent owner decide, or even the current owner decide, well, they're tired of that facade and we want to do something different. Okay.
And they might get like a tax break on that.
They may very well.
Yeah. So we'll look into it. I'll put it as an issue or something you might want to be brought up to.
Good.
Anything else? Good?
Very good.
Adopt their court, the changes.
Okay. Do we have motion to adopt the report?
Motion.
Blaney on the motion, Phil, Robin on the second. All in favor? I oppose. We have six yes, one absent. Thank you, Robert.
Uh, we're going to go back to?
You're going to jump back, okay, to Atlantic, I think? You have some information on the easements?
One longer, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Oh, okay. Well, oh, something else.
Okay. Where are you taking us?
I will take you to number 17, Mill Creek Marina.
Mill Creek Marina.
Recommend the release of.
17.
Maintenance bond for the landscaping.
Very good. Do we have motion?
Motion.
Motion by Phil.
Second.
Second by Blaney, all in favor? I oppose abstentions, six yes. 17. We have, how about Fairfield?
I have this. It is a temporary sign, two of them, for Fairfield, which is the Southampton Point on Conny Road 39.
They have some very large signs attached to it.
They have some banners.
Banners on pens.
That need to come down, and they will be removed. So two signs, one on the corner of Conny Road 39, which is the sign facing Conny Road 39 technically, and then one's further down on Tuckahoe. One will say Models Open without the exclamation points. And one will say Sales Center and, and the ARB has approved it.
What mechanism do we have to get those banner signs?
Uh, they said that they were down for, they will be down within a couple of days, but we can put it as a condition of the approval.
Condition, okay.
And I can, I mean, I can make sure that they get a violation within two weeks if they don't.
Are they two-sided signs or they're just from one direction?
Uh, two-sided.
They're two-sided?
Yes. It's a temporary one-year, that's what code allows.
Okay.
Approved with the banners coming down.
Okay. Very good.
Within a week?
Yes.
Okay. A week. I'm good.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria.
Second.
Second by Robin, all in favor? I oppose abstentions, six yes.
And then I have two add-ons for Watermill Bridge for signature and Haygrounds School for signature.
Okay, this is an add-on Watermill Bridge signature. Has it been signed?
It has, sir.
So this is add-on item 20.
Watermill Building.
Watermill Building Supply.
Watermill Building Supply. And item 27, add-on item acknowledged for signature. What was the other one, Claire?
Uh, Haygrounds. Haygrounds School with their arts crest.
Oh, Haygrounds School, add-on item number 28 is acknowledged for signature.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to go back to Procedo, and I'm going to handle this one with the Scuttle Hole Bill's Business Park together.
Okay.
Five, one, two, and five. So you saw the pre-submission conference for the construction of three buildings on the property. I'll show you the overall. So this is a pre-submission within the last year. This is in Watermill, is off of Scuttle Hole Road. It's a flag free property.
Oh, yeah.
HB zoning. In order to facilitate the design of the buildings, the two larger 15,000 square foot buildings in the back and the smaller office building in the front, there will have to be a lot line modification, application process at the same time. The application's been submitted. The lot line modification is incomplete. It doesn't have some requisite information. It's a one-step process, so we need to get all the information. So I'm recommending that be deemed incomplete. That's number two. And with regard to the larger project, it's type 1 action, so I'm recommending we coordinate SECR to start that process.
Oh.
It may be ultimately deemed incomplete too. There's a couple of mapping items, but at least we have a basic information to do SECR on it. If you'd like to proceed.
So the lot line, there are two?
So number two, I would recommend deeming incomplete. There's a checklist in the, in the, your computer.
Okay.
Related to that. And then number five, we would coordinate SECR.
So the first one is completeness, and are we setting a hearing for the 27th? Lot line modification?
Uh, no, incompletes.
Oh, incomplete, I'm sorry. Incomplete. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria. Second by Zuccarelli, all in favor? Second by Zuccarelli, all in favor, I oppose abstentions, six yes. Now, item five is to...
Coordinate SECR.
Coordinate SECR.
With the Health Department and the DEC.
Very good, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria again, second by Phil, all in favor, I oppose abstentions, six yes.
And then my second to last one.
Last one's still out in the hall.
Is Roscoe. At your last meeting, the applicant did not show up to your public hearing, and we need to reschedule it.
Oh, okay.
For September 27th, which would be the fourth item, right?
Very good.
Motion.
Motion by Phil. Second by Zuccarelli, all in favor, I oppose abstentions, we have six yes.
And then, they can jump ahead and then we'll come back with the other one. Thank you, sorry about the...
Anthony, did you want to jump in, or Matthew? Okay.
Janice is coming up. Janice is here.
Oh, Janice is here? Janice is in the house.
I have to make room for Janice.
All right.
She's never going to be able to sit here.
Nice to see you.
So nice to be seen.
Item 22, we have a zone change. Angela, welcome.
Thanks.
Don't want to mess this one up.
Can I take this home? This is a great color, I might want to use it.
Okay. Distributing maps.
This is a zone change referral for, it's called Five Cedar Lane. Hi. How are you? No, you don't have to be mad at this stuff. Roll rehearsal. So, Noyac Road, Cromers, adjacent to Cromers, is zoned, it used to be zoned R10, over the year, and it was zoned VB at one point, then it was zoned R40, even though it's like a miniscule lot in an R40 zone. Now, they're requesting to zone it HC. So, which is what Cromers is zoned. And that way, they can merge Hamlet Commercial slash Residential.
Hamlet Commercial.
Yeah. HC is a zoning category, which is a transition zone. It's usually a step-down zone between VB, which is the Hamlet Center, and HC allows for retail, it allows for everything that's going on here. This is zoned HC, this is zoned R40. This, and Dennis has the survey, and I have another one here. See you guys down here. It's already being used as a parking lot, and there's a residential home on that lot that they have been using as like storage for records and office.
Oh, okay.
So, they want to keep the house that's on there and still use it for record storage office, maybe an accessory apartment related to employee housing, which would be permitted. And, but there's, there's more, but wait.
There's more?
Before you go past that one, what is the C of O on that? It's a one-family house?
Yeah.
That's the C of O.
Yep, one-story, or two-story. I actually don't know how many...
But it's one-family house.
So, I don't know how many of you go over here, but, but you know, what's, the situation here is kind of crazy. So, we, the towns helped create this parking in the front. This is just a problem, right? So, we had a public hearing, the town board had a public hearing, this is the town board referral team right now. The, the hearing was about, you know, basically, it's all about like managing the parking situation here. Cedar Lane is a private road. They own, Tony owns this, this, and this. This is not part of the zone change, it's just going to stay residential. This, this is the only lot that needs access technically. So, this is a private road. There's parking along this road, there's a dumpster on the private property. So, we're going to fix this, and you're going to fix it at the site plan if this happens, but I took the liberty of looking at this, and I want to make a couple of suggestions to you that maybe you'll consider making to the town board, and also talk to you about how it's going to be coordinated. It's, it's technically, everybody owns it to the center line, one side owns it to the center line.
So, there's a, he's made a...
It's a private, on the other properties or right of ways? They would have, so the discussion that took place after the zone change meeting was that they were going to confirm that it was a private road, which they have.
Okay.
Then they're talking about abandoning this private road to the center line. All parties agree, everybody who fronts on this road...
Do they have technical, I'm sorry, I'm just asking technically. Is there technical rights of way in deeds that are in these adjoining properties? Or how did they determine? I mean, I know they're butting it, but is there, because you're going to have to look at deeds and...
Yeah, they're going to have to look at the, that, but the way the highway law works is either a public road or a private road. We don't have like an official map here that maps the roads.
But I didn't know if any of those deeds might have saying that they have a right of way to...
Not to anyone's knowledge, it does not. And we, the first step was confirming it is indeed a private road. So, the next step would be for them to produce these deeds and determine that they can abandon to the center line. This house is ecstatic over this prospect, because they want their own separate access.
Oh, they get access.
Well, here's what I want to suggest. So, they would take access, potentially, we have to figure this out. Cedar Lane is a 50-foot wide road.
You get into that parking lot, parking behind Cromers?
Yes.
Okay, I just...
So, if everybody abandoned the roadway, this person, this house takes access from Noyac Road. So, she's not, you know, overly concerned, she's got parking and a dumpster on her lot. So, this guy wants his own flagpole. Normally, lot width requirements of 50-foot wide road, Cedar Lane is 50 feet wide. Normally, you'd have 20-foot flags, and then, but that doesn't really do you much good. You want one 20-foot flag, basically, two 10s, right? So, this guy gets a 10, he gets a 10, which he's really part of this anyway. And then the rest, you would give, now Cromers would have 30 feet of frontage to play with. We would be able to, you know, and you can figure this all out later in the site plan, but the idea is that you would do a 10-foot flag, a 10-foot flag, and then they would have 30 in the 50, out of the 50, to have, now we can line the parking up, you know, we can create some more, a better situation there with buffers, et cetera. This guy would be thrilled to have his own, because he's saying at the public hearing, I can't even get to my house, because people park all over this now. There's no access.
They could claim ownership of that?
There would have to be, see, it's kind of flipped. The idea would be better if the flagpole was adjacent to, you know what I mean? It would be on the other side, and we'd have to cross over.
And what does this have to do with Cromers?
This has to do with Cromers, because they're asking for a zone change for this lot, and then they're going to merge it all together.
Bigger parking lot.
So, now, this is going to become merged with Cromers, and we're going to be faced with, the town board doesn't like the fact that there's these off-site conditions going on in the residential. This is residentially zoned, this is not supposed to be like that. So, you know, they're not just getting a zone change and not have to fix anything, they want them to fix these circumstances here, and that would be...
And get a 10-foot flag if, when 20 is required.
They would need variance, of course. So...
And what, what would Cromer have to do to preclude people still parking on those two flags?
They would have to put up signage and stuff. I mean, if you had parking, if you had a better layout and a better system for parking, then there wouldn't be a haphazard situation going on, you know? When you had a dedicated lane, 20 feet wide, common driveway, for lot 19 and 9, they would, they wouldn't, you know, they would be happy, they could fence it off if they had to.
I'm just saying, there would have to be some sort of divocation.
Absolutely, yeah, I think so. So...
Take that down, goes right into the bay essentially, that other street.
This goes into like wetland woods, it doesn't really go, it used to, but can you really get to anything there?
People tell me they go clamming there.
It's a private road, it really shouldn't be...
Well, that's why I'm saying other people may feel that they have access to it.
Potentially, wait, that's an issue, so I could write that in the report.
Possible public use, oh, well.
Yeah, so, just besides all this technical stuff, the comp plan and the 2004 Noyac, Hamlet Center study support this, this notion of fixing the parking at Cromers and dealing with it. And that was the impetus for doing the design in the front in the first place.
Oh, we did it, and the change was made, right?
This little picture shows you kind of what they wanted to do initially, and what they did do, but the problem is, the zoning doesn't really support the parking on, on this side of the road. But if you could just pass that over, so you see that little graphic there? That's part of the comp plan, the, the Hamlet Center study.
All of these flags, is this going to be all part of the zone change, or is that separate?
Well, the town, so, so here's another little technical nugget for you. The town board legislates by local law, so we don't have conditional zone changes. Do you know what I mean? Well, not necessarily, but we just don't, some towns, like, you know, they grant a zone change based on conditions, 1 through whatever. We don't do it that way, it's a local law that does, conditions it, so it's not conditional. So, in talking to the town board, I said, well, you could do, because it's an unlisted action, you can do a conditioned negative declaration, and we can put the conditions in there, which one of the conditions is they want it merged, they want a site plan, figuring out all these issues, they want it to be, they want them to have to come back and do more. So, to that end, they're coordinating this SECR with you. And they're typically lead agency, but because you're an involved agency, we'll coordinate that SECR with you, so that we can potentially do that kind of SECR assessment.
So, what if those subsequent, so if those subsequent activities don't occur, the merger, the flags, then what happens to that zone change?
Well, it's not like a PDD in that it won't expire, it will be effectuated, but it will be premised on a SECR. But if they didn't do it, I mean, the town board can always, you know, hold that, I don't know, we don't have a, I mean, there's bonding, there's other things.
Yeah, but let's, I think the zone change should go through clean and unattached.
Right, but how do they get their conditions? It would be through you, that would require the merger and the conditions.
They don't really have to do conditions, we could just change the zone.
They, which is what the applicant wants them to do. They just want to ensure that something else is going to take place here, like the conditions are going to be bettered, which the applicant, to their credit, also wants. I mean, they want an operation that works, they don't want...
Couldn't the applicant at least go through the pre-submission conference phase, and we issue a pre-submission report, where this is, okay, we approve this, we like this parking layout, you know, go get your zone changed, then come back to us. Finally, it's sort of...
They could, but they, we didn't do it that way in the first place, so they closed it with a 30-day comment period awaiting your referral, so that, that already happened. That ship kind of sailed, which I wish I would have asked them, because that was a good idea.
Just tell me, you know, one thing, this, this whole change and the traffic patterns there and everything, I mean, this has gone through extensive and exhaustive meetings with the board, with the local property owners and everything, and it just got done. But this is not really technically related to that, well, it's two separate applications, if I'm wrong, say.
Um, no, it's, you mean the front part?
Yeah, all of it, really, because that's really, it's going to be related to the back. He has to go through the front part to get to...
Yeah, well, the front part got done based on a lot of community, you know, input. I would note that the community supports this zone change. You know, there were some people that were concerned about some stuff like turning around over here, trucks use this spot to turn around, and they were saying maybe, you know, this kind of...
Going east is almost impossible.
Right, that is, you can't do that.
You drive down the road until you go through somebody's driveway, that you can pull in and turn around.
Yeah. Well, and you know, Noyac Road is a town road, it's not a county road anymore, it's ours now. So...
Does the zoning change stand on its own as a positive? So that if the other things don't happen, or don't happen the way we're looking for it to happen, we've still accomplished a positive in the area?
Yes, because what it does is it eliminates a non-conforming lot.
Okay.
It merges this with that and becomes conforming, and it makes the use conforming, the office use. So, it has some conforming features.
It does stand on its...
It moves toward conformity, for sure.
So, it stands on its own as a positive action?
As it should.
As it should?
Yes.
And then, we will have to then go, I think your next step, Dennis?
Well, that, when that ship has sailed...
Yeah, but I'm just saying, it'll come back here.
It will come back here, hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully. We want them to come back in for a second.
Well, if, well, let me ask, so once they get the zone change, to be able to do the striping or to, to make that parking lot, wouldn't they have to come back to us?
Yes.
Okay, so then we get their back?
If they want, anything that necessitates a building permit.
Okay, so that means that they probably wouldn't have done the zone change just to have it sit.
Well, they want the zone change so they can merge the lots.
Right, so, but they would have to come to us for this, so...
Clearly, they're in violation when they're parking cars on, on a street, dumpsters, haphazard, so maybe that spurs them on, I don't know.
That is true, they have been issued a violation for that. So, that is something that we can use to get them back.
But I think if the zoning stands on its own, you have to...
I agree.
So, do you want to make the comments about the, the flagpole stuff, or just leave that as something you'll look at? I wrote it up, but I didn't know how you were going to, you know, it's up to you. Take a look. And, no, I don't, no, I'm not attached to anything, you can change everything. Thanks. I always just like to, you to have something to look at. So, it basically starts with the basic whereas is that it's, you know, it's a non-conforming lot, it contains a dwelling, town board is elected to coordinate lead agency, I'm assuming you're going to want them to stay as lead agency in their zone change matter. And then I made these comments, you know, it's a private road, one option is to abandon the roadway, that's not the only option, if you want to add anything else, I can. And then, you know, it goes into like, you know, what I just mentioned about the 10-foot wide or 20-foot wide flagpoles. And number two says, assuming the abandonment is successful and the variances are granted, that you recommend site plan be redesigned to accommodate the dumpster on site. That was another issue of the town board, they didn't like it being across the street like that. And better parking, circulation and landscaping. Then three, I say you're in agreement that the subject lot must be merged with Cromers in order to eliminate the non-conformity of that little lot.
Are they mandate, are they mandating the merger, though?
Well, that's the whole point of the zone change, that's their entire intention. They can't get a mortgage on the residential lot, because it's not the right zone. So, that's their whole premise for doing this in the first place.
But you said they can't impose conditions, so...
They can't impose conditions, the only place we, I can come up with to impose conditions is in a condition NACDA, or the conditions through you and the site plan. But the town board won't be putting conditions in the zone change, because they do it by local law.
Do we need to put anything in here about lighting? We don't get high, that would all be site plans.
So, then I say, you know, the final whereas is that you review the information from the Noyac Hamlet Center study, which I showed you here, and the comp plan, which is also here. And it's consistent with the intention of both, which it is. Which is generally that this should be, you know, formalized and made better for parking and the use that it already is. And require that the applicant submit an application for site plan review of the merged parcels, because now you'll look at it as a whole. And then, you know, I'm assuming you're recommending it, but that's up to you, you know, you make that decision, you tell me.
We're all supportive of the zone change.
And, you know, preserving the right to modify and improve the conditions as per the site plan review process, so that way you don't have any, you're not tying yourself to anything, but you definitely want to take a look at this one.
Yeah. I mean, that, that area has been so torturous.
We support the zone change, and we reserve the right, and here's some stuff that may or may not, you know, help you. Meaning the flagpole stuff and the, you know, moving the dumps, you know, these are site plan elements that you're going to want to take a look at. So, I don't know if you want to say anything else, or if you have any other comments, or, you know, you have a lot on the agenda, I should stop talking?
Covers everything. Do we have motion to adopt the report?
Motion.
Motion by Phil, second by Zuccarelli, all in favor, I oppose abstentions. We have six yes, one absent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, as always.
I appreciate it.
There, do you want to circle back to Atlantic Gulf?
Yes, the word on the street is there's no covenants.
No covenants?
No covenants. So, it's that type of time of the review where covenants warrants is required, the wetlands permit talked about buffers, but did not have a covenants related to it. But I'll refer back to the wetlands permit, you know, for when we have our final review with the environmental, I'll make sure...
Well, this applicant, that, the Gulf course preceded the wetlands.
It did not precede wetlands, but it wasn't exact in terms of now, of course, covenants are a typical tool that you use, but in this case, there was no covenants related to wetlands or buffers.
Right, the planning board's conditional approval speaks to it, but it never made it into a covenant.
Oh, okay.
So, there'll be no hearing related to that requirement, if you want to waive the hearing.
I think we were glad to waive the hearing.
Okay, so they'll, I'll have it deemed complete for purposes of referrals, and then when referrals come back in, we'll bring it back up and for consideration.
Do we need to deem it complete by resolution?
Yes.
Very good, do we motion to deem it complete?
Motion.
Motion by Phil, second by Gloria.
Yes.
All in favor, aye, opposed, extensions. Six yes, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, Matt, you're gonna...
Yes, take over.
Claire meeting. I thought the last meeting was Claire meeting.
I know, it's all, take September off.
Well, Jack has come back.
Oh, is she, when?
When?
She'll be, she'll be back for the...
Next meeting?
Next meeting, she'll be back.
She brings some babies.
I was just thinking about that today when I was going through the agenda, I wonder when she's coming back.
Yeah.
Start with number one.
One.
How strange.
Ready, as well?
Yes. It's a lot line modification in Bridgehampton, I did some review of what was submitted, unfortunately, based on my review, it's not complete for some mapping purposes, they will need variances as part of this application, but we really want to see the map changed because they don't show the transfer now, they're showing how it will end up, rather than the, you know, the three stages that we asked for, which is existing, what's going to happen, and then what it's going to look like. And the applicant knows that, so we're just looking to deem this incomplete.
Very good, motion to deem it complete?
Motion.
Motion by Phil.
Second.
Second by Robin, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions.
Moving on to number eight, Stella Luna Family Trust, this is three, is it three lots up or is it... Two lots up, isn't it?
The one, yeah.
That's got a new representative in there looking for a 90-day extension, this will be the seventh extension.
We have the applicant here, the podium, please.
Sure, absolutely, sorry, thank you.
I appeared from Montauk today, just to make an appearance, I was told to be here to represent, what is going on with Stella Luna?
Could we get your name for the...
My name is Richard A. Hammer from Beyond Owen Hammer in Montauk. What is going on is I am the chief cat herder, apparently, in the room. I have three separate people that are involved in our application, as you remember, there were three parcels, Eric Ramey, Dan Weldon, and Stella Luna Land Trust. We applied for and received our subdivision approval, which did implicate them, because all three of us have rights over three adjacent 20-foot side-by-side access strips. Wayne Brune was also one of the cat herders in the room with me, however, he is not currently working with Mr. Ramey, who is representing himself, I guess, from this point forward. What is holding us upright now are a couple of things, one is getting Mr. Ramey's mortgagee to subordinate, or mortgageor to subordinate his interest for the grant of the common access driveways, installations, the deed to dedication, all that. I'm not in charge of that process, but Mr. Ramey told me that he is speaking with a supervisor at his bank to secure that. On the things that I am involved in, we do have updated information from the Health Water Authority, this is dated August 16th, it was sent to me yesterday, they have conditionally given us the go-ahead to begin trenching and installing the fire hydrant. So, there was an application submitted, I can submit a copy of this to you, that shows that we made applications for the private hydrant and some of the other stuff. So, hopefully that work will commence to tweet, I doubt they would do it before Memorial Day, but we are starting to work on that. The remaining issues, you know, nothing has changed on the property, nothing, you know, everything remains the same, but we do have to get all those documents subordinated to Mr. Ramey's mortgageor, and finalize our subdivision approval at that time.
Okay, Phil? Keep plugging away, as they say.
Sometimes it feels like I'm beating my head against the wall, but I will continue to do, you know, my best, you know, to see this through, this has been a very long process, and, you know, I don't think that it's because it's not complex, I would say, quite frankly, but in any event, we will, I think we do have, the town attorney had approved all of our easements and documents, so that is all done. It's really, you know, administrative details that are outside of my control at this point that I need to get to finalize it. So, I can submit a copy of the updated information from the Health Department, which is pretty pretty news.
I guess we move forward with the 90-day extension?
And I hope I don't see you in 90 days. But it's possible, but I will come here from Montauk with a smile on my face.
Actually, we're going to skip to number 16.
Do we have, well, are we going to act on the extension?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Zuccarelli.
Second.
Second by Robin, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions. Six yes.
I have an applicant here, so...
Oh, 16.
16, which is Bridgehampton Road Races Lot 12, it's actually a site plan for a residence. So, as part of the subdivision approval of 2001 for Bridgehampton Road Races, where there was, you know, 20 residential lots and the one quips-up lot, which is Gulf of the Bridge, that prior to the issuance of the building permits for lots one through 21, a site plan review will be conducted for each individual lot to consider the following: scaring, erosion control, drainage, landscaping, compliance with clearing and fertilizer-dependent vegetation restrictions, and setting of the driveway, the home and accessory structures or appurtenances. So, we got this back in the beginning of August, it was referred to the town engineer's office, the applicant also did submit a planning board approval resolution from 2012, which did bring back fertilizer-dependent vegetation, they, I guess, neutralized some properties to bring back.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so they can have up to 15%. And this, we've done one, Claire's done one before, it's pretty simple, just this would be to approve the site plan, I did upload a map for you guys. And with some conditions that were, that Christine was asking for. If you'd like me to go through those conditions.
Sure.
Great. So, changes to the plan, just to show the date of the test hole, show typical detail for the drainage structures, erosion and sediment control practices shall be shown on the drawing, and then show and note stabilized construction entrance to prevent tracking onto checkered path, general conditions to utilize that stabilized construction entrance, contact the engineering division, and then prior to signature, pay the engineering review fee, current landowner shall fire, file a notarized affidavit indicating compliance with conditions of the site plan, and submit six sets of plans for signature.
Good, does the applicant?
Yeah, Brian Macasio, Adam Miller Group, 2462 Main Street, turn of the applicant. And we have no issues with these conditions, the plans are actually ready at the Reiner Group, I'll pick them up on my way out of here, and I'll get them to you guys, you know, in short order. Fee, client's getting to us, and I'll have the notarized affidavit, so all good on our end.
Good, great. So, do we motion for site plan approval?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Phil, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions. Six yes.
We'll go back in order to number nine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
We're on extensions?
Extension, yes, this is a very lot line modification that Jackie was handling, they're requesting a one-year extension of the pre-app report.
One year?
Yeah, needs some variances, this was the two very small lots in East Quogue, they're just over 2,000 square feet each after the transfer.
Oh, okay. Okay, very good, do we motion? Motion by Zuccarelli. Second by Robin, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions, six yes. You have item 10, Sherwood Tanner.
This is another request for a 90-day extension, I believe...
I think that's what Jim Hume was working on.
Jim Hume was working on, Daphne's now working on it, did attach her letter, so where should that?
The seventh 90-day extension. Do you want to see him?
Yes, she was, was she here last week? I don't know if she was or not, it's up to you guys, if you want to do a two-week...
This has been around forever.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a new, it's a new representative, so she's trying to clean things up, she's getting maps finalized, she's getting the Health Department reapproval, it's in process, it's just, it's Daphne Vaughn.
Daphne, okay. So, should we do a 90-day and see what happens?
It's being actively worked on, just a lot of, I'm trying to put all the pieces together.
Why don't we do 90 days and get an update?
Yeah.
Tell them no more extensions without an update.
Jackie can tell them, because she'll get it back.
Do we motion for 90 days?
Motion.
Motion by Robin.
Second.
Second by Gloria, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions. Six yes, one absent, we have Gina Webster, item 11.
Yeah, this is another lot line modification of Jackie's, this is in West Hampton, also requires variances, this is for an extension of the pre-app report for a one-year.
Very good, do we motion? Motion by Zuccarelli. Second by Phil, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions. Six yes, one absent.
Number 13 does say to discuss the pre-app report, I didn't hear from the applicant's representative today, and they are requesting an extension of the action deadline to the 13th, just so they can read.
To the next meeting.
To the next meeting.
Very good, do we motion for extension? Motion by Phil.
Second.
Second by Gloria, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions. Six yes, how about Sea Tuck Cove Estates?
Oh, it's Anthony.
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 Oh, I'm sorry.
We're going on to 21. Site disturbance at 2268 Deerfield Road, this, the homeowner was found to encroach into a wetlands non-disturbance buffer, I've been working with the Environment Division to sort of find some appropriate species, Marty was able to look at the plan, he approves of all the species and where everything's going to be, so we're just looking to approve their revenge plan in that non-disturbance, non-fertilization wetlands buffer. It should be a plan uploaded.
What's the...
With the condition to, I know on number one, to increase this amount of carex, which is Pennsylvania sedge, just, they had them as 18 inches on center, just to do 12 inches on center, so a little bit more dense.
But how, how much area are we...
I don't know if they identified what the exact encroachment amount was, I don't know. Because they weren't necessarily over-cleared percentage-wise, it was, because they're in the aquifer also, but it was... Five, they're revegetating 5,000 square feet.
Very good, do we motion? Motion by Phil. Second by Zuccarelli, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions. Six yes, one absent. Phil, have we signed Creative Touch Landscaping, item 25?
We have.
Acknowledged for signature, item 26 is Mill Creek Heights, has that been signed? Item 26 acknowledged for signature. Matthew, you're up.
I mean, sorry. Number 14, which is Sea Tuck Cove Estates, this is a four-lot subdivision on South Bay Avenue, but Tim McCully couldn't be here today, and he wants to chit-chat about some of the stuff I put in my report, so we're just going to do an extension of the action deadline at his request until September 13th.
Motion?
Motion.
Second by Phil. Second by Zuccarelli, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions, six yes. You have Creative Touch.
Yeah, actually, I had to give them their masks back, they forgot to get them stamped, so, so 18 is off the agenda.
18 is off, I thought we signed Creative Touch.
No, it's, did you acknowledge that? It shouldn't, it shouldn't have been on the...
Signed something for it.
Yeah, not for Creative Touch, though, I took those off, I did Mill Creek Heights where mine was mine.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, yeah, Creative Touch is not signed.
Okay, it's not signed. And how about...
19, Spion Properties, Ed Burdi site, Ed was falling asleep, I chit-chatted with him outside about the conditions, he was totally fine, I told him to go home.
It's more comfortable in the... You were good, we got to keep you around.
So, the Spion Properties, this is Ed Burdi's property on Spion Grove Road, this planning board's reviewed the site plan since, well, the 70s, it's ongoing, this is what's going to be the last building on this site, it's all the way in the back, this is mostly warehousing, special trade contractor uses over there, you know, the site's getting heavily used, but it is being used, it's not vacant, and actually, the site's in pretty good condition, Ed Burdi's landscaping sometimes, but it's largely pretty good. I've attached a staff report onto the, if you guys see it, I don't know if it's attached.
Yeah.
So, I'll just quickly go through it, the description of the property, it's 8.14 acres in the aquifer, the Central Pine Barrens, LI40 zoning district, the property's improved with the number of buildings and parking, this is for an 8,400-square-foot building and 27 additional parking spaces for special trade contractor warehouse uses. Let's see here, page two, although limited to 50%, Ed Burdi has transferred into development rights to give you the maximum of 65% clearing, they're right under that number, according to the plans, this project was an unlisted action, this board did a neg deck in February, February 8th, 2018, we had a hearing in June, June 28th, and a 10-day written comment period, no comments were received. The town engineer, we referred to, and they are just asking for a couple of minor changes to the plan, drainage structure detail, and the roof downspouts to the dry well, as well as the fees. On page three, the ARB approved this at their meeting on August 7th, the Long Island Central Pine Barrens haven't gotten back to me yet, but this board makes the determination if it's compliant, and that's why you'll see when I get to my conditions, I'm asking for something on the map that we haven't put on yet, which was actually to put on what the transfer of the TDR, to bring the clearing to 65%, it's not shown on the map, so we've sort of just been doing it, so I'd just rather have it on this map, you know, that we stamp and it's on there. The Spion Fire District didn't respond, In Gray, the Department of Fire Prevention, sent me comments today, they're just going to ask that, and I told Burdi about this, and I'll work with him on relocating it, but there's a, there's a dumpster back here, that's going to be a little bit of a problem, so the, I told Ed about it, and he said, well, we'll work it out, so I told him that'll be a revision to the plan, just so you are aware. So, that was their only recommendation. The next section, I go through the site plan requirements, landscaping buffer screening, most of this is already there, the only additional landscaping is just some additional Bradford pear trees within the new parking lot, which is what was approved previously, so that's consistent. The lighting, the building lighting and the additional pole lighting in the new parking lot matches what was approved on the previous plan, that was one of the requirements that came out of the pre-submission conference report, and that's shown on the plan. Number C, letter C, the ARB approved this at their meeting on August 7th. D, the drainage and slopes, again, the comments and the recommendations from the engineer have been addressed, and they'll just make a couple minor changes. E, handicap parking, they just need to actually put the calculations on the plan, no new signage, there is a new dumpster location with screening and evergreen plantings, access to the site isn't changing, outdoor storage isn't changing, but I am going to reiterate, they need to show where the previous site plans approved the outdoor storage. And then the next section in the report is the special exception criteria, which is A through M, everything is in order on this, I don't want to go through A through M on the special exception, we've done it for nine other buildings in the site, so it's the same exact type of site plan previously, it's an industrial site, and it's going to have all the appropriate uses in there. So, then we have that report, and then I have a resolution in there. Oh, I lied, I didn't put the resolution in there. Oh, I lied, I didn't put the resolution in there.
Yeah, I was going to say.
So the first resolve is that we adopt the staff report, but we just went through August 23rd, 2018. You guys want to just do that, and I can go through the rest, or do you want me to do the rest of it first? First, it was just to do the staff report, and then I could have the.
So the.
I have two resolutions here.
Two resolves?
Oh, maybe I should, maybe I should just do it as one, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, I don't know why I did that, Dennis.
Yeah.
So we'll change that. So the resolve is going to be to adopt the staff report dated August 23rd, and to conditionally approve the site plan, subject to the following changes, there's a number of changes to the site plan, the handicap parking calculations, the engineer's comments, show the locations of the lighting fixtures, consistent with the lighting plan, I will circle that, because I don't believe that that's a condition, outdoor storage areas previously approved by this board, indicate additional shrub plantings within the front buffer areas, I let Ed know, it's mostly pine barrens, some blueberries, something, just to sort of bolster it up a little bit. The one notation on the map regarding previously approved or pending site plan applications, so they know that there's been multiple on this property, that every other conditional approval remains, you know, valid. The notation on the map regarding the light burn page number for cross-access, as well as any other covenants that were previously approved, I indicate the TDR calculations and redeemed certificate information to the clearing data that allows up to 65%, that way it's on the final map, and it's just there. And then incorporation of any changes required by the Fire Office of Fire Prevention, which I just noted, so I will specifically add about the dumpster relocation. And then the general conditions, no dawn to dusk, dusk to dawn lighting fixtures, and no additional lighting without planning board approval, all lighting should be shielded, the screening of the HVAC equipment, payment of the engineering fee, pre-construction meeting with the engineer, submission of the affidavit, and then submission of six plans.
One little.
What do you got there?
You said TDR, and it's TRP.
I will fix that. Oh, yeah, look at that. Perfect.
Also on the first page, Anthony, at the bottom, the resolve should be, be a further resolve.
Yes.
That ties it in as one resolution.
Yep, yeah, I'm going to fix that, absolutely.
Very good, as amended, do we have a motion for approval?
Motion.
Motion by Phil.
Second.
Second by Gloria, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions, six yes, one absent.
Just, and if I can, just Dennis, on the Creative Touch landscaping, so this board knows.
Yes.
That site plan is completely done, okay? And what happened, and actually, if you go out there, landscaping came out really good, the DOT hammered them on that, if you recall, made them redo everything up, the aerial show, they actually tightened that up amazingly, the trucks no longer back out onto the property and onto the highway, so it was good there. The thing is, what happened was, we gave them the conditional approval, they got stuck in the DOT, they never got the final maps to me for signature, and the approvals expired, but all the work has been done, so I'm just going to re-issue the approval.
Okay.
So it's valid, and then we can do signature of the maps. So I just wanted to sort of give you.
Is that a walk-on now, or?
No, I just wanted to explain to you.
Oh, okay, okay.
So you know when I come in next time, how I'm doing it.
Okay, great. Very good. Motion for adjourn?
Do a motion to adjourn, I would like to renew my request.
Exec?
Executive meeting, yes.
I think we've died in the, the town attorney.
Executive session can be held on matters of personnel and/or possibility of litigation or whether there is active litigation, I believe what I have to discuss has to be in the executive session.
I don't need to, but I can say that we have had, as you know, we've had discussions that are exempt from the open meetings law, to the extent that they are attorney-client confidential discussions, so if that's something that you would like to do, you, or you are within the authority to do so, if you're in charge of the board that wants to do that.
I just feel more comfortable, maybe get a further date.
Like, is there an affirmative right to this court? Can you get it?
If you don't want to have it today, I need it, you know, I, it is important, this is health, I, we're all sitting here, if you want to call us back next week, that's fine, but I mean.
I object to the call back next week, I'm not going to be here, and I have no forewarning on the possibility of extra meetings in this period of time, so I would be object to that.
And what's it about?
Personnel, but we do not make personnel decisions.
Personnel and/or possible litigation, I don't know how it falls, but I cannot continue to discuss it, because then I'm breaching, so it's.
But I think we are only allowed to discuss active, ongoing litigation.
Fine, if you don't want to have that, that's fine. I will. Dennis?
Motion to adjourn?
The, what attorney?
What's the attorney, I heard you cautiously, but I didn't.
I don't know what the, what the issue is, as you know, I'm recused from other matters as it relates to the particular applications that you may have heard today, I can tell you that you have authority to go into executive session if you'd like to discuss litigation, personnel, but it has to be specific, it can't be general personnel concerns. In another scenario, which we've done before, an exemption from the open meetings law, not necessarily entitled executive session, but an exemption from open meetings law is an opportunity for us to have attorney-client privileged conversations, which you are allowed to do, so I'm, I don't know if that would qualify as the members concerned.
But we would have to know if you would be involved to be excluded from that, so that you're the right attorney here, right?
I can ask my colleague to come in if you, if it's something that I can't speak to at this moment.
Is there other counsel here even to attend?
Karen, I think Karen is still here. If you don't want to hold an executive session, then I will just, fine, I'm not going to force the board, but I, I am very uncomfortable with the information I have.
Well, you're certainly free to communicate your concerns to us individually.
I will, but if, fine.
Okay, so we motion to adjourn?
Yes.
By Phil, second by Gloria.
I said second.
Gloria's second.
Yeah.
Very good, we adjourned.